Good evening and welcome to the June 22, 2023 meeting of the Longview City Council. Tonight, our invocation and pledge will be led by the members of the Knights of Pithias, Lodge 26. Welcome, Mr. Wade. Their fraternal order is filled with men and women who are passionate about helping their community by following three guiding principles: friendship, charity, and benevolence. Their mission is generally focused on to benefit two particular categories: the less fortunate and youth through educational initiatives. Prayer will be led by Jerry Camp, the pledge by Paul Springer, the chancellor. Other attendings will be Alan Inquist, Jim Quinn, Beau Lothrup, Roger Franigan, Jimmy Fears, Sonny Atkinson, Patrick Bartlett, Sean Checker, and Jeff Bishop. Please rise.
All right, if you'll bow your heads. Lord, many of us have been busy today with busy schedules, phone calls to make, different work projects we're working on. We ask that you help us to take time right now to reflect on the blessings you've given us as a country and as a people, a place where we can come and speak our mind without fear of retaliation. We thank you for the council that gives so freely of their own time to come and serve the city of Longview. We ask that tonight's discussions be mindful of each person speaking and that we be respectful. We ask that you bless the decisions that the council makes, open our hearts and minds to your Holy Spirit in all things we pray and give thanks in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much for what you're doing for being here tonight. We have a presentation which I will read. We have a proclamation regarding United Way Day of Action. Whereas the Greater Longview United Way has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize June 23, 2023, as United Way Day of Action in the city of Longview. Each year, the United Way around the world invite their communities to improve their conditions in which they live by participating in the United Way Day of Action. What better way to volunteer and work towards helping people live better lives than to be active on Day of Action? This year, Greater Longview United's Way, GLUW, is asking businesses and individuals to assist with some small project and to collect much-needed items for our United Way partners, agencies, and so now therefore I, Dr. Andy Mack, authority vested me as American City of Longview, do proclaim June 23, 2023, as United Way Day of Action in the city of Longview. Dr. Evan Doleve, Heather Stevenson, and Raven Atkinson will come up to receive the proclamation. You know, United Way plays such a role in our community and across our country, but we're so thankful to have such a strong chapter here in Longview where so many dedicated people do so much to raise funds and items that are so greatly needed by people that are less fortunate in our community. And we appreciate your service and your dedication. This couldn't happen without you all, and we appreciate it. I know there's a big spider web of people that work for United Way and volunteer, including a lot of our city staff. And so, we appreciate all of that. We appreciate y'all's direction and dedication because without you all, it doesn't go past here. So, thank you all very much. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. What a great organization. We're not a citizen comment. I do have a couple of speaker cards. Mary Schelmeyer.
Yes, how are you all this evening?
Good.
Yeah, I'm just here just to represent the Longview Tennis. Oh, okay.
State your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mary Schelmeyer. My home address?
Yes, please.
Here in town is 26 Wellington Drive.
Thank you.
Longview, Texas. And I'm just here to represent the Longview Tennis Association. We are aware of the Parks and Recreation Committee engaging in new facilities and the parks and all of the, in the, a lot of the different areas. And we just wanted to make sure that the community was aware that there's a strong tennis community here, and we would just love for it to be available to everybody in Longview, not just the high schools, not just, it's a wonderful life sport, and we just think we have enough people and we could share a lot of our gifts with the entire city. I have several people here who represent the sport, and we just want to make sure that Longview would consider including eight to 12 courts is what we're looking at to so that we could have some sanctional tournaments for these younger individuals. We can't seem to host these types of events for the kids. So, we just feel like we have a strong community there and just want to be considered in your plans. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ulysses Johnson, Jr.?
Good evening. My name is Ulysses Johnson, Jr., 2323 South 13th Street, Longview, Texas. I'm here to give you some history. One time in 1985, we had here the Black Rodeo, and we started that. I was one of the starters. I was one of the riders. I was a bull rider, and I'm one that started the Juneteenth Parade down Martin Luther King in 1985. But I didn't have the help that they got now, so I wanted to thank the city, city manager, the police department for a well-done parade they give this weekend. But I got a gripe for him because after time I put the horses up, the hot dogs were all gone, so I didn't get a hot dog. Thank y'all.
Thank you. You could have had some donuts. They're not very good at eating donuts. Seriously. Lost a bet on that one. Okay. I don't have any more citizen comment cards. We'll move on to public safety update. Chief Boone.
Mr. Mayor, I thought there was a little more love than that. Mr. Mayor, council, Mr. Mcfee. First, start with some customer satisfaction numbers for May. If you look at the chart there, you'll see for the officer interaction, that was a 471 out of five. So, again, you can see that's between our very satisfied and satisfied. And then with our dispatchers, we're at 4.73 out of five. So, again, very pleased with those numbers. And then, this is just a snapshot of some of the comments, and it's also running a tally of our overall satisfaction numbers. So, you'll see with the officers, a 472 overall, 466 with dispatch, and a 457 out of five with the police department. And then, you'll see several of the comments there. One is actually in Spanish, and I translated that, and it's "very satisfied. I felt safe and heard. Thank you. A thousand blessings." So, that was very touching. I'd like to see that. And this here is awards, scholarship awards to several students and their family members, two police officers. And for those that don't know the name Lulu Dubois, she was, for about 21 years, she was the executive assistant to several different chiefs of police, and she passed away from cancer several years ago, and this has been honoring her, and it was great to see so many students apply and receive that award. Then with We Friends, we had on June 13, they invited us to come out and show them what police do and some police equipment, so we took advantage of that. And we also went out to the We Learn Center of First Baptist on June 19 and did the same as well. And then, we had more active shooter alert training that we sponsor on June 13 and June 14. And again, we're going to take advantage of schools being out right now and try to get as many officers as we can through before we start our next school year. And then, on June 14, Dr. Koya, he and his family, you can see them in the upper picture there, they came out, and they've been doing this for several years. I think the only year they've missed probably over the last five or six is for 2020 with COVID. But he comes out and he spoils us for the day, and his wife makes a special dish for us, and he has pizza as well and some other desserts, and comes out and hangs out and visits with us the whole time during lunch. And we also had a surprise guest, as you can see on the left side there. Dr. Mack was able to come and say a few words to the troops as well, so definitely appreciate that. And then, June 16 came. That was Thursday night, Friday morning, and I can tell y'all, for as many years as I've been on this earth, I have never heard wind make sounds like that before. And that is when the wheels came off the bus Friday morning. And I make a little light of it. It was a tough situation, but I'm thankful that we didn't have any more damage or injuries than what we did. So, this is just some pictures of some of the storm damage, and it was a quick team effort from the very beginning. We were contacting Public Works and SWEPCO AEP, and they were coming out there, and basically if it had a line in it, SWEPCO was taking care of it. If it did not have a line in it, Public Works was out there taking care of it very quickly. If you didn't see us out there, we were about 17, what I call more substantial intersections that were out without power that we came up with some means of whether it was us manning them, barricades, stop signs, battery power, generator power, just to try to keep that going. Obviously, state laws, when all the lights go out, that you're supposed to treat it like a four-way stop. Sometimes, people get caught up in the moment, though, and don't always pay attention to that, so we wanted to provide as much extra safety as we could so that people wouldn't get hurt. And this was some of the behind-the-scenes. Start off in the Friday morning, the PD conference room, figuring out what we had and what we needed. And then, as you could see, by the next day, the meeting progressed where everybody between Public Works, Fire Department, City Manager's Office, Police Department coming together figuring out, and Mark Robinson from AEP to figure out exactly what we needed and what we needed to do and what our forecasting looked like for over the next several days. And then, again, just more of the cleanup that was being provided by SWEPCO and our Public Works Department that did a great job. And while we had all that going on, we also had the balloon races on Friday and Saturday evening and Sunday, and we had over 20 officers out there for, on Friday and Saturday. And we actually got to, there's another opportunity to use our vests that light up, and those were provided through a grant through McCoy's that Mr. Tim Carpenter helped us with, so we were definitely able to use those on those nights because it was definitely dark out there. And on Juneteenth, we provided the traffic control for the parade, and at the end of the parade, we were set up, and we did have a drink and hot dog giveaway, and it gave us a chance to reach out with the community and visit a little bit, and definitely a great event. So, I can call it an annual event now, so we've got two under our belt, and we'll be out there again next year, and Chief Stillman will be with us, too. And I just want to say thank you to everybody that's brought something to the PD over the last week. You can see, we've had water dropped off to us. Julie Woods and Associates and Chick-fil-A came up, brought Chick-fil-A yesterday. Sweet Creations this weekend dropped off. That's just one box of mini that they brought to us. And then Chewie's brought pre-made dinners out as well on Saturday evening, so all very appreciated. And with that, we'll go to this next video, and you may have to, you know, plug your ears a little bit. The music might be a little loud. This has been a project going on for several months between police, fire, dispatch, and we turned to our media development department, and they have done an awesome job with the recruiting video that doesn't just showcase public safety, but the Longview community. So, Chief Stillman, I'm going to say it. Join at least one of our teams, police or fire. We'd love to have you. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Chief Boone? Great video. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Stillman, you got one for us tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Before I start, Mayor, I'd just like to say, take that. Circling back to the donut thing. Got that out of my system now. Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Mcfee, thanks for the opportunity to provide you with a few updates of some things that have happened in the Fire Department since our last meeting. One of our battalion chiefs, Battalion Chief Travis Pickler, he graduated from the Texas Fire Chiefs Academy. It's a credentialing program. It's a two-year process. We try to circulate all of our chiefs through it. It's just part of the career ladder that they're trying to climb to take on higher responsibility within the ranks of the Fire Department. So, congratulations to him on completing that process. I've got to say thank you to Longview. You know, we took a licking this week, and it's not the first time. It won't be the last time. It's been a rough week for a lot of people in town, and I want to say how much I appreciate the resiliency and the patience of what this community demonstrates time after time after time again. And it's not always perfect, and we learn from every one of these events, but the fact that this community stands to me to be better prepared to face emergencies like this, we're just getting better. And they, I get it, it's been a week for a lot of people without power. I didn't have it for four days where I live, and it's tough, but we always seem to make it through because we lean on one another. As I was making my way around the community and seeing neighborhoods getting cleaned up and people and neighbors helping each other, that always makes me so proud to work and live here in Longview because this community bonds together during difficult times to get ourselves through it. So, I just want to say thank you to Longview for standing up and taking care of one another. Oh, skipped over that one, sorry. And I'd also like to express the condolences on the Longview Fire Department and actually the city of Longview. I know that there was an electric lineman out of the state of West Virginia that lost his life doing the job of trying to get our electricity restored here in the area and in the region. He passed away over in Harrison County while working in the city of Marshall. I know that these men travel long distances to come in and help us, and as an agency that deploys people out of state to go help in other people's times of need, I know the value in that. And so, we certainly send our sympathies and our respect to his family, and we just wish him the best. I know it's an extremely difficult time, but we couldn't be where we were without people like this coming in to help us out in these desperate times, so. And on the latter note, we actually made a structure fire yesterday and had a situation pop up that is none like any other I've ever seen in my almost 33 years here at the city. We've had fires where we've rescued people, we've rescued cats, we've rescued goldfish, we've rescued snakes. We rescued a pig yesterday, and that was kind of one in a million. I don't know how, why. I tried to get the name of the pig, but it wished to remain anonymous. Richard blurred the face out for me so nobody could identify it, but it was a huge pot-belly pig in a house. It was actually in a room with about six other dogs, and when the guys got in there trying to round up the dogs and realized that one of them was a pig, it was a game changer for everybody. There's actually some video of them wrestling this pig out in the yard as it was trying to run away. They were scared it was going to get out in the street. I chose not to show that because I'm scared Peter might get involved. But it was just, it just goes to show you, you never know what you're going to come across in emergency response. The Fire Department, as Chief Boone mentioned, we're hiring. Our hiring process is currently open until July the 10th. If you know anybody out there that's a paramedic, a firefighter, paramedic, or firefighter EMT, please give us a look. We have openings. We'll put you to work. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Stillman? Great job as well this week. Thanks, Chief Stillman. All right, council, we're to consent again to any items council like pull off for separate discussion. If not, is there a motion? We have a motion.
Second.
If a motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're to action items. Consider resolution. Evidence and no objection to the tax credit application of THF Hillside Village. Dietrich.
Mr. Mayor, council, and city manager, this is a tax credit application to rehabilitate Hillside Village apartments and located at 205 West Whaley. And to give you some perspective, it's the apartments that are near the AT&amp;T building where the Emergency Operations Center is. And so, but what's most significant about this project is that it will help restore and maintain 100 units of living space and affordable space to the elderly and disabled. As you may know, this is considerable, there's a considerable shortage of this type of housing in Longview for our citizens. And in order to access the tax credit and other finance options, the Texas Housing Foundation must request authority from the city of Longview and the Longview Housing Office. On May 3, the city attorney, me, and our Longview housing manager met with the requesting entities to further explore the details of this project. And as we listened and answered, and they answered our questions and the city attorney's question, we felt this is a good project for our community, and we are asking our staff for it to be approved. But Mr. Mayor, reminder, there's a public hearing first, so. And there are delegates here to answer any questions that you may have.
The social crowd public hearings are now open. We have three speaker cards for questions if needed. Justin Unger, Jonathan Correia, and Andrew Bennett. Any questions of any of these people or of Dietrich? If not, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Second.
We have a motion is second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dietrich.
Thank you.
Consider resolution authorizing a tax abatement agreement between the city of Longview and Aon Coyle. Heather Malone.
Mayor, council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to come before you today to ask for a resolution in support of the tax abatement for Aon Coyle. They reached out to us in November of 2022, giving us the opportunity to compete for this expansion project, and we worked with them for several months, competing with the state of Virginia. And in April, the lead co-board did approve a package once Aon did choose us as the preferred site for this expansion project. Aon is expanding 200,000 square feet of production space with a $40 million investment into their facility and an additional 250 new full-time jobs. With that, we did work with the city manager and staff to recommend a 10-year tax abatement equalling 75% over the 10-year period. And with that, I asked for any questions or comments. We did do a rate of return with the city's investment, and it came back over 30% rate of return with a two-and-a-half-year payback. Over the 10-year period, the city can expect to collect about $1.2 million after the abatement is said and done. So, any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any question, Ms. Malone? I just want to make comment that I really appreciate the negotiation that took place, especially with Roland and Wayne and Heather, to make this abatement feasible for us in the short term and for Aon Coyle in the long term, because that's very important where we're getting some of our investment back early and very, very, very well done. Job well done on all parts. So, if there's no other questions, is there a motion?
I make a motion.
We have motions or second? Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Now, consider a resolution to approve the city manager's recommendation as city of Longview Parks Recreation Director, Mr. Mcfee.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. I perform a number of roles as city manager, but one of the most consequential is recommending a staff to fill our director-level positions for your consideration. Tonight, I'm excited to bring a candidate to you to serve as the city's next director of Parks and Recreation. After a month-long nationwide search, I'm excited to recommend John Albertson to join the city of Longview and lead our Parks and Recreation Department. We worked with SGR since February to conduct a nationwide search to fill the position following the departure of Mr. Karen. Knowing that this director will oversee a park system that has received repeated multimillion-dollar investments in recent years from our community, it was essential that all qualified candidates be considered. We received 29 initial applications. Of these 10 semifinalists met the appropriate educational and relevant experience requirements. Then, I take that information and engaged with the city's executive-level team, also including the city attorney as well as the city secretary. We all reviewed the semifinalists and selected five finalists. As routinely happens, there was a clear break in the top-tier candidates, which were three. One of the top three withdrew from consideration during the process. So, a panel that included me, the assistant city manager, Mary Ann Hagenbueker, the director of Grant and Human Services, Laura Hill, and a former Parks and Recreation Advisory Board member who is also involved with the Arboretum interviewed the other two candidates. Additionally, those candidates were given a tour of city facilities and an opportunity to meet with members of the Parks and Recreation staff which they would oversee. These interviews, feedback from the Parks staff, and reference checks clearly aligned, and I'm pleased to recommend John to lead our Parks and Recreation Department. He's an exceptional leader with exemplary knowledge of Parks and Recreation. He's served since March 2015 as director of Putnam County Parks and Recreation in Cookeville, Tennessee. Prior to that, he's served a variety of recreation roles at Tennessee Technical University, where he also earned a bachelor of exercise science and a master's of sports management. I'm pleased John could join us tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions and ask for your approval for this recommendation.
Any question, Mr. Mcfee?
No questions, but is Mr. Albertson here? Does he want to say a few words?
He's here.
Ultimately, of course, I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity. I look forward to working with everyone here and being a part of this wonderful community. Like you all spent the time interviewing me and looking into my past, I, of course, looked into the city and saw a lot of great things going on and a great future ahead, so.
Thank you, sir. If there's no other questions or comments, is we have a motion?
We have to approve.
Second.
We have a motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard, sir. Now, as a committee interest, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you, Mayor. The, a couple of quick points here. The primary, Pantry Primary is going to host a summer play date on July the 27th from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. with the Jackman Splash Pad. Play dates are for new, old, and future primary pirates. I understand there will probably be some people that are a bit low older than the pirate primaries age there. The Summer Food Program continues throughout the summer, free breakfast and lunch, all children ages one through 18. PTISD website has the dates and times for all of those locations. And the Gregton Food Pantry will be back underway again on Thursday, July the 6th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Naughty.
Good evening, everyone. Hi, Christian. Good to see you. Juneteenth weekend. In spite of all the bad weather, we still had an amazing time this weekend at Broad. The parade was exceptional. I think 46 minutes in, it was still ongoing, so it was a good time for all. Thank you, Chief Boone, for being out there once again. I didn't get to make it by, but apparently all the hot dogs were gone by the end of the parade, so next year you'll have to just get a bit more, so. And I'm sure, Mayor, you're going to be saying something about this past week.
Yes.
I just personally want to say thank you to the police and to the fire, as well as Public Works, for a job well done. You know, I can't tell you the guys, the calls that I received where people were willing to help. What can I do? What can I do to help? I even had a guy to call and wanted to know if I knew anybody that needed generators. So, we have a lot of great people in the community, and I just want to say thank you, and this is what makes Longview the best that it can be. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wade?
Yes, Mayor. I'd also like to acknowledge the efforts that it took to make Juneteenth a success this year. I appreciate being able to celebrate that holiday, and each year it grows bigger and bigger. So, thank you to everyone that was involved throughout the city, the community, and everyone that took place. Also, tomorrow night, Melon Jelly Band is playing at the Longview Museum of Fine Arts. That's here in South Longview at 213 North Freedonia Street. Please come out, support the arts. Longview Museum of Fine Arts is a perfect place to get involved in our growing arts division, our arts here in Longview. Last but not least, I'd also like to acknowledge everyone in the city that got involved and worked to keep us all safe and came together during a real trying time. So, thank you to everyone that was involved.
Thank you, sir.
Can I regress just a minute?
Please.
Because I definitely wanted to say thank you to Dietrich and the Juneteenth Committee, as well as the city of Longview for a job well done this Juneteenth. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Newstead.
Yeah, so, let's see. So, there's me on the Sabine River. Thank you, Sean, to Hera with the city to help invite me to Thank you, Sean, to Hera with the city to help invite me to go out there with them. Had the privilege of going out there twice. And so this is something special to me because I grew up on the Sabine River, doing a lot of catfishing with my dad. So that was actually, it's been 25, 30 years since I've been back on the Sabine. And what's crazy is we have it right here in our back door and our backyard. So this is a great thing. I appreciate all the people that are putting this together. So what they have going on, on Tuesday, June 27th and June 28th, 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. at, I believe it's the Modcub. On here, yeah. Modcub, there it is. So there, it's a focus group meeting where they're looking at improving access to the Sabine River, which will be the topic of the discussion, to come and go events. So if you're interested in that, definitely stop by and see us there. And then also, I just want to give my thanks to everybody for the city, too. I had some people that I was talking to about getting a home, and they came in and visited, and they came from another place, you know, another state. And I was like, they're like, everybody's so friendly here, and I cannot believe how everybody was so nice to all the people, even though they had no electricity, and how thankful they are for the linemen and everything like that. So it's not going unnoticed, our Longview hospitality, so thank you, everybody that did everything to help us get restored.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Campbell.
I also just wanted to say thank you so much to our Fire Department, our Police Department, Public Works, all the linemen from our great local area and from everywhere that came to help out, as well as our community. I thank them for bearing with us during this time and know that we're all praying for you and that we have community partners, like the Longview Community Ministries and the local food pantry. As Tim stated, that if you guys are in need of resources like water, food, utility help, any of those things, please make sure to reach out to our community partners that can help you during this time.
Ms. Burtle.
Being number six, there's nothing left to say, really, but I do want to reiterate the same thing that the all other council persons have said. We do thank the public safety and Public Works people, and especially the linemen. I talked to quite a few of them over the course of three or four days there and stopped and visited with them and everything. And it's a, it's a big, it's a big challenge for them to come all this way from way up the north and everything to service people they don't even know, and then some of them not to go back. So we do pray for that, and I do thank all those folks that gave all their time and efforts to make us comfortable.
Mr. Mcfee.
Yes, Mayor. Mayor, Council, I'd be remiss if I didn't take a second to publicly thank Seth Pyle for the dedicated leadership of the Parks and Recreation Department for the past few months. He's served as the acting Parks and Recreation Director since February, and he's really played a vital role in keeping that department running as we conducted the search. So Seth, if you're watching, I just want you to know, I appreciate your commitment to our community and the service to the Parks Department.
Thank you, sir. Well, city offices will be closed on Tuesday, July the 4th in recognition of Independence Day. Sanitation recycle will be collected on a regular schedule the week of Monday, July the 3rd. Speaking of July 4th, make plans to join us at Longview Convention Complex for our fireworks and freedom celebration. In addition to the free concert and the biggest fireworks showing in Texas, we'll have patriotic car shows, vendors, petting zoos, entertainment, eating contests, and more. Gates open at 4:00 p.m. for this fun and free community event. And also, don't miss Art Walk coming on July the 6th in downtown Longview. This is always a great event in our community, and we're excited to see it return. And Councilwoman Ishihara, nice to see you in our midst tonight. Good to see you as well, always. So I do want to take just a moment to speak on this event that we had last week, which Mother Nature can be extremely cruel, but you know, that's something that we cannot prevent. And I, and I, it's just, it's amazing to me that some individuals think that we can control these type of things, that I turn the power on and off in this community, and I don't. I have no control over it whatsoever. But I know the people that were working day and night to restore our power, I can't thank you enough. Our city staff, our Public Works, our Longview Fire Department, Longview Police Department, y'all worked 12-hour shifts, you worked overtime, you worked intersections, you worked day and night, you worked constantly to keep our citizens safe. And our citizens responded by serving Gatorade and stopping intersections to give you all food and drinks, and so many businesses stepped up. I could spend all day here telling you how many businesses stepped up to help people in need. You know, Grace Creek Church had, were serving food, they were giving away generators, they were taking, giving people places to stop. Chick-fil-A was taking care of dinners and lunches and breakfasts for these linemen. Bubba's 33. The list goes on and on. I chew, you know, you've seen it all. Everybody stepped up. And I saw neighbors helping neighbors, people going to check on elderly people that needed assistance. And you know, some people still don't have power. Power has not been restored 100% yet because there are still areas that are, there are troubled areas that are hard to get to. Linemen are having to wade through creeks and storm areas, and it's just a tough time. And we had people coming here from all over the country to help us. And how sad it is for that young man from West Virginia who lost his life helping us going to another state to help, to do a good deed. And no good deed goes unpunished. It's so unfortunate that that occurred. But you know, I just want to thank the citizens of Longview for, for being patient and understanding that these things take time, and everyone's doing the best they can. I know so many linemen that worked all day on Father's Day because power needed to be restored. I haven't heard one single SWEPCO, Public Works, Public Safety person complain yet, not one. Because they're just doing their job, they're doing it at such a high level that it just, my heart is just, I can't thank you enough. You know, partnering with LISD to have cooling stations, our library, a cooling station to come out and give you a place to come and go and take care of things, we just stepped up to the best of our abilities, and it just makes me proud to be, to be part of this community. And for those of you that were discouraged, to say the least, remember, there is no, there's no favoritism when it comes to stuff like this. Things get turned on according to a plan, and SWEPCO is in charge of that plan. And hospitals have to be first, and nursing care facilities have to be first, and places like that are always going to be first. So no one gets pushed aside because of where you live or who you are, what color your skin is. That has no play in this, in this situation. This is done by a master plan and the way that they can get to it the quickest. And I applaud Mark Robinson, who, I can't believe he hasn't blocked my phone calls yet because I have called him a thousand times, and he's called me to stay in contact and Roland. I bother Roland on Father's Day, and I bother him on Saturday, and I, because we try to stay in communication and try to provide the best information we can for the citizens, and that's what we did. The city of Longview put things out, I put things out on Facebook, and you respond, and I appreciate that.